......................................................................................................
Los otros son las 10 desde la mañana. Estamos desesperados. Tenemos 70 miembros presentes, 70 días para un coro. Está 200, se nos interviene la cámara.
..........................................
Miss Han is walking in. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council chambers. Welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, March 3rd, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. It is now 10:15 a.m. and we have nine members present, just one shy of a quorum. But we also have a couple of special presentations scheduled for this morning. Let me begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilmember Lavange and Garcetti.
Mister President, members, please welcome the Washington I. Rucker Jazz Ensemble. ......... We're gonna play, they keep playing, Janice. Here we are in the beautiful John F. R. Chambers on this beautiful Wednesday morning. Third day of March. And Washington Rucker is playing. No, we're gonna speak over this beautiful man right there. Alright now. Come on over with that stage jump. Please welcome Washington Rucker, a very accomplished, award-winning jazz musician who hails from the great neighborhood of Silverlake and has the best shirts in town. And we see each other at BAMCO at Hyatt Perion Rowena. But more than that, but more than that, he has a program called Jazz for We People. And Councilman Garcetti and I would like to salute he and his ensemble today. And as Councilmember Janice Han so eloquently suggested years ago, moments of inspiration. I hope this is a moment of inspiration as we hear this jazz. And I gotta call on the former county supervisor Ed Edelman. Ed, you like music? Alright, hang in here because we're doing some special presentation here, right here. No, that's alright, you know Ed Edelman right here? He's the man who brought us the Hollywood Bowl rejuvenation. But Eric, take over.
Alright. Thank you very much, Tom, and it's a great honor to be able to honor a great Silver Laker as well as a great musician. I joked we could roll up the piano and I'd love to jam with you guys, but this is amazing. And work that Washington Rucker has done as an award-winning jazz musician, career spans more than 40 years and native of Oklahoma. His first professional engagement was when he was 14 years old and where was it?
Tulsa, Oklahoma.
In Tulsa, at what place?
At a mortuary.
Alright, at a mortuary. So there is life after death. And it continued when he started playing with US Navy. Let me hand it back to Tom Lavange.
And through his experience throughout his naval career, a decade-long engagement. He was a big band drummer at the historic Howard Theater in Washington DC. His talents spanned several musical generations. And his career includes stints with some of the world's greatest jazz, blues, rhythm and blues gospel musicians, including BB King, Reverend James Cleveland, Linda Hopkins, Nancy Wilson, Stevie Wonder, Joe Williams. Additionally, Rutgers appeared in numerous movies, including a pivotal role in a critically acclaimed jazz classic, Birds, which chronicles the history of the rise and fall of the legendary Charlie Parker.
Rucker also created the innovative format behind Jazz for We People, that's "we" with two "e's", nearly 20 years ago. And the program underscores the importance of jazz as America's only original art form and the foundation of much of today's popular music, be it hip-hop, R&B, a number of other things that jazz laid the foundation of putting a dynamic mix of lively music, engaging narrative, dynamic audience participation. And also to impart this important knowledge, Jazz for We People has been enthusiastically received by educators and young people, thousands of students literally over the years.
And in 1997, Rucker was inducted into the Oklahoma Hall of Fame for Jazz. And he continues to spread gospel and jazz to young and old alike through his great talents. So on this day, we brought you here to this great hall, the People's Hall of the City of Los Angeles, to salute you and help that you have great success, Washington, all your years ahead. And thank you for all the great notes that you bring to people because it's music that gets to the soul and jazz gets to the inner soul. Let's have a big hand for Washington Rucker.
I want to thank the council for having us here and it has been a pleasure over the past 20 years to do this. We've used a lot of musicians, but none have been any greater than the ones we have here today. Christian Korb is a bass player, quite a lovely young lady. Arturo Valesco is a trombone player. He's bilingual, so a lot of times when we go to school, he will do the same thing in Spanish. Louis Van Taylor is a saxophone player in that player. And Mr. Ram Lee Davis is a trumpet player. And actually, the gentleman that inspired this was the gentleman, Mr. Ernest Dillahay from the Department of Cultural Affairs. And we'd like to thank him and acknowledge his presence as well.
Give Ernest a big hand for cultural affairs.
Well, thank you for this opportunity and thank you for honoring these great musicians. Because in the city of Los Angeles, which is the largest creative community in the world, and hosts the great world-class artists such as Washington and his group, we're pleased and I'm glad that you're supporting this and you're supporting the arts in the city. Because truly, without the arts, just think of what kind of city we would have. Thank you very much.
And I thank you very much and we're gonna just close out here with a beautiful another rendition. So let's go one, two, three. Alright now. Washington Rucker and the Jazz Ensemble, Mister President, let's everybody give a big hand. I'm going down Main Street with them, I'm gonna fill this chambers because we're gonna march the saints in. Thank you very much, Mister President and everybody, what a wonderful inspirational morning, thank you.
Thank you, Tom Lavange. I know folks watching at home, Mardi Gras is not a week late. This is our inspiration for this morning. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Gru, Han, Lavange, Lado, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Beagosa, Weiss, Sin, Padilla, 13 members present and a former, Mister President.
Thank you very much, the council is officially in session. But before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, we do have one more presentation scheduled for this morning. Let me at this time recognize Councilmember Han. Miss Han?
Well, that really is a hard act to follow. But I have something that is just as important to celebrate, a woman who should inspire just that much joy and excitement. And Mister President, colleagues, I am extremely honored today to present, come stand next to me, Norma Anders. And Norma is going to retire tomorrow after more than three decades of dedicated service to the Los Angeles Public Library. And I'm gonna read this because your career is absolutely fascinating and really points out what wonderful city employees we have here and the things that you've done. Norma began her career with the City of Los Angeles as a children's librarian at the Watts Branch Library after receiving her master's in the university of Southern California in 1973. And she transferred a year later to the Vernon Branch Library to serve as a young adult librarian. In September of that year, she held the position of children's librarian at the John Muir Branch Library. She hosted sometimes 50 elementary school classes per month at the library. That is just incredible. In September of 1979, she became the acting senior librarian at the Wilmington Branch Library. And in the early part of 1980, she returned to the John Muir Branch Library for five more years as a children's librarian and soon acquired the position of acting senior librarian. Again in the 80s, she went back to the Wilmington, we need a blowtorch here. She went back to the Wilmington Branch Library as a children's librarian. which encouraged outreach to the community and included the residents in the planning of that gorgeous new library, which opened in 1996. Finally, in May of 1997, Norma extended her service, and expertise, to the newly-created Harbor Gateway, Harbor City Branch Library, as senior librarian, and oversaw the increase in circulation of materials from sixty-seven thousand to more than a hundred and twenty-three thousand per year. Additionally, she played a big role in the development of the Friends of the Library program, as well as the expansion of the library, which increased from four thousand five hundred and six thousand square feet. And this is all, you can see it, it's a storefront library, in a strip mall in my district. And Norma has really made the best of that library, it's packed every day, it's a school I like going there, I leave all the children who are enjoying that facility, and your wonderful guidance and advice. So you can see from the beginning of her career, Norma Anders has been a constant presence, particularly in the fifteenth council district, and has really served all my communities extremely well. And you know what, when you think about thirty years, thirty years, I can only imagine the number of children, the number of resident seniors that you really have impacted their lives. With Norma celebrating her this morning are her husband David, Wade Pan David, her son Wayne. They both have matching mustaches. Isn't that special? And we also have, her colleagues are here, Jerry Ho, Roy Stone, who's the president of Library Guild, and my good friend Rosalie Preston is here as well. Thank you, Norma. Thank you, it seems insignificant that you can say thank you, but your dedication shows the love and respect that you have to show. And we really will miss you tremendously, but you have lived a life that's never been in vain, and it's the first time I ever laid eyes on you. I knew that you were extremely special, and every person deserves in their lives to come across a librarian like you. So congratulations, we're very indebted, we're gonna miss you, sure you wanna retire? And so, on behalf, and then I'm gonna let Roy say some things, and then I'd like for you to say some things too. So on behalf of the entire city of Los Angeles, we, assigned by everyone plus the mayor, we are congratulating you and wishing you the best in your retirement. I'm Roy Stone, president of Library Guild, and, well, this is a happy occasion on sending Norma into the happy time of retirement. It's also sad, because we're losing a really good, active member of the Librarians Guild, as well as a member of the community. Every library she's worked in, she has managed to get the community involved in the library. As Councilwoman Hahn knows and has said before, librarians are pretty shy and quiet, but not Norma. And she's made the community care about their library everywhere she's worked. And she's gonna continue doing that, being friends of the Harbor Gateway Branch Library. As a union person, she's also been not shy and quiet, giving me all kinds of work to do, saying, "We can't let management do these things, we have to challenge them." And that's how I used to be greeted by Norma all the time. And we're gonna miss Norma, both as a professional in the community and as a member of the Librarians Guild. Thank you.
Janice, I wanna address my remarks to you. I can't tell you or have the words to tell you how honored I am. And I wanna thank you so much for your support of our libraries, all through your district. And we're going to get our new libraries, and that's because you've supported it so much, you've supported all libraries, but your fifteenth district is very, very special and very, very lucky to have you. You're a very special council person. We love you dearly, and we wish you the best too, and thank you so much.
Let's have a hand for one of the greatest librarians the city has ever had.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Grue moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items that have been requested to be continued, items eighty, eighty-three, and eighty-four, which are closed session items, the city attorney's requesting those matters be continued to March sixteenth.
Members, items eighty, eighty-three, and eighty-four, unless there's an objection, we'll continue. So order. Mr. Weiss?
I was just gonna say that I would appreciate continuing items twenty-seven and twenty-eight for two weeks as well.
Any objections to continuing those matters?
Mr. President, two weeks would be March seventeenth, which is St. Patrick's Day, and I believe council wishes to keep the nineteenth.
Okay, so items twenty-seven and twenty-eight are continued without objection to March nineteenth. We're almost there.
Item twenty-nine special, please.
Okay, we're gonna get there in a minute. Any other continuances? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Next item, Mr. President, item number one is an item noticed for public hearing. It's a 2004 annual weed and brush abatement ordinance.
Okay, and I do not have requests from members of the public to adjust the council on item number one. Public hearing is open, public hearing is closed, members wishing to be heard on item number one. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. And members, let me also announce at this point that due to the upcoming recess for the National League of Cities Conference, all matters approved today shall go forth with. All matters approved today will be sent forth with. Next item?
Next item, Mr. President, are items which public hearings have been held, items two through forty-two, item twenty-seven and twenty-eight have already been acted on.
Okay, two through forty-two now before us, members, we do have reports from committees with recommendations, public hearings have been held, the motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings, seeing no such motion, request for specials at this time, Ms. Miskowski.
Thirty.
Thirty, call special by Ms. Miskowski, Mr. Zine. Twenty-six, call special by Mr. Zine, Mr. Reyes. Twenty-nine, call special by Mr. Reyes. And Madam Clerk, if we can call item three special as well for Mr. Garcetti. Twenty-two, call special for Ms. Hahn. Any other specials, members? Items two through forty-two, seeing no further requests for specials on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, items forty-three through seventy-five are items which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration, and amending motion, a technical is required on forty-three and forty-four to change the hearing dates to June twenty-ninth.
Okay, members, without objection, items forty-three and forty-four shall be considered as amended. We do have cards of item seventy-three, we'll call that special on the balance of the items. We do not have requests from members of the public to adjust the council, public hearings are open and closed. Ms. Miskowski.
I call item sixty special, just so I can recuse myself.
Okay, sixty, call special. Any other specials?
Item number fifty, please.
Item number fifty, call special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials? Seeing no further requests for specials on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
The next items, items seventy-six through eighty-seven are the closed session items, and there is a request from the city attorney to receive the file, number seventy-nine and eighty-two.
Okay, members, let's open the roll on seventy-nine and eighty-two, on that recommendation to receive a file by the city attorney. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those matters are received and filed, the balance of the closed session matters remaining on the desk shall be held until closed session. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item on the continuation agenda is item number eighty-eight, and public hearing has not been held on that item, ten votes are not far from consideration.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to adjust the council on item eighty-eight.
And there is, I'm sorry, there is a substitute motion on that also.
Public hearing is open, public hearing is closed, has the amending motion on item eighty been specified?
I don't believe so.
Okay, let's hold item eighty-eight on the desk, awaiting that substitute motion. Next item, please.
Mr. President, you wish to take up the public comment at this time?
Yes. This is public comment for non-agenda items for today's meeting, and the council calls forward Miguel Angel Perez at this time.
Good morning, all. My name is Miguel Angel Perez, and the South Central farmers have asked me to represent them today, speak from the heart. I'm also executive chair of the Los Angeles Land Use Coalition. As you all know, the saga continues, and the travesty still continues. The people toil and work hard towards the betterment of their lives. It is important for all of us here to understand this travesty is continuing, and that we must all work together so we can complete a unity of the city of Los Angeles for the benefit of all, citizens, residents, constituents, and business owners that exist in the city of Los Angeles. The betterment is very, very important to all of us that live here, eat here, and work here, all levels, from political individuals elected to political offices, to the individual that works on a daily basis, to the children that go to schools here in the city of Los Angeles. It is important for all of us to understand that we still ask, and we still appeal to your hearts and minds and your souls to understand the struggle of the South Central farmers. Again, I ask you, remember, every time you sit with your families, every time you go and eat the food that is on your plate, the fruits and vegetables you consume with your family are picked and harvested and planted by people like the South Central farmers. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, this concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number three was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Actually, by Mr. Garcetti. And Mr. Cardenas, this is item number three. I believe he's stepping out of chambers to be absent on this item. Looked the roster reflect, Mr. Cardenas has left chambers. And Mr. Garcetti, unless there's some discussion, we can proceed with the vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item three is approved, and let's welcome Mr. Cardenas back in. Since we're on items requiring recusals, let's jump to item number sixty. Place some musical chairs here. Madam Clerk, please mark Mr. Cardenas back in, Ms. Miskowski out. Any discussion on item number sixty?
I believe Mr. Zine wants to ask one legal question, we're waiting for the city attorney who works on this to come forward so we can have that question answered, but let's just hold us on the table.
Okay, well then, let's bring her back in, and we'll get to item number sixty in its normal course. Mr. Zine, be ready, please. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item number twenty-two was called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn.
Bye, Councilmember Garcetti, thank you for calling it special. Colleagues, I just wanted to highlight this, this is just another one of, I think, a great success story in Wilmington, and this is a piece of property, it's about 1.3 acres in Wilmington that has been vacant for many, many years, and it's in a residential neighborhood. And thanks to the mayor's office and CRA, and our great Brownsfield team, who actually looks at property that may not be as desirable as other pieces of property, and looks to provide funding to assist in the environmental assessment of it, and as a result of everybody working together, we're about to issue a request or proposal for an affordable housing development. We think it's a perfect place for first-time homebuyers, to have an opportunity to get involved in homeownership in Wilmington, so just wanted to highlight this, hope you'll support it today, but it's good news for the community of Wilmington, it's good news for taking vacant property and turning it in to people's dreams of owning their own homes, so just wanna thank everybody in the city for working together to help really develop this vacant piece of property. It'll go a long way towards not only transforming people's lives, but really transforming that whole neighborhood and the whole community of Wilmington, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other members wishing to be heard on the side? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Unanimity approved, good job down in the fifteenth district. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-six, called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine. Let's proceed to the next item.
Item number twenty-nine was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thank you, colleagues. I called it special because I did get some concern about the destruction of official documents regarding our land use decisions, and what we've done is essentially freed up some of the storage space, we've kept intact environment impact reports within the environmental review section, approximately fourteen boxes, we've also kept intact administrative services, divisions, transcripts regarding division of land cases. So we do have those documents intact, it is an action the public committee took, and we also have available to those who ask to come in and visit our records regarding our land use planning issues. There are historic groups, historical groups that want to learn more about actions taken in different parts of the city. If you come in, request to review those documents, they're available to you. Obviously, there's certain personnel documents that will also be destroyed that are private, that the public won't be able to access because of the nature of that information. But beyond that, it is available upon request for those who want to view the historic documents of different cases and development of different parts of the city, so just informational item, wanna make sure people are aware of that, we did get some phone calls, some concerns in the committee about which documents were being kept, we are keeping EIRs, we are keeping the parcel land decisions as well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard on item twenty-nine? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Zine is back, you ready for item twenty-six?
President, I want to get some water.
Item twenty-six.
L.A.'s best water and power water. I wish Tom Labange was here to hear that. Oh, there he is. On this item, I just wanted to highlight this as regards to the vending operations within the city of Los Angeles, there are nine hundred buildings, and a variety of these buildings have different type of vending machines. This was heard in committee, we see Madam Spoh from Councilmember Weiss and Councilman Garcetti with an extension, to look at what other marketing we can do in the city of Los Angeles, but the primary focus on this is to get an RF.
There are historic groups, historical groups, that want to learn more about actions taken in different parts of the city. If you come in, request to review those documents, they're available to you. Obviously, there are certain personnel documents that will also be destroyed that are private, that the public won't be able to access because of the nature of that information. But beyond that, it is available upon request for those who want to view the historic documents of different cases and development of different parts of the city. So just informational item, want to make sure people are aware of that. We did get some phone calls, some concerns in the committee about which documents were being kept. We are keeping EIRs, we are keeping the parcel land decisions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard on item 29? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Zine is back. Ready for item 26?
Mr. President, I want to get some water.
Item 26.
L.A.'s best water, power, water. I wish Tom LeBonce was here to hear that. Oh, there he is. On this item, I just wanted to highlight this as regards to the vending operations within the city of Los Angeles. There are 900 buildings, and a variety of these buildings have different type of vending machines. Now, this was heard in committee, receiving items both from Councilmember Weiss and Councilman Garcetti, with an extension to look at what other marketing we can do in the city of Los Angeles. But the primary focus on this is to get an RFP for the exclusivity of vending operations within the city of Los Angeles, where the city would receive compensation. New York became the Snapple trademark capital and received a tremendous amount of money into their general fund, and we're looking for the same opportunities here in Los Angeles. So what we'd like to do is issue that RFP, and that's what this motion calls for, and it will be expanded out to see what other marketing we can do with the city of Los Angeles to bring in revenues to the city of Los Angeles at no cost to the taxpayers, and bring this all into focus. So General Services is working with us on this, and I thank the committee, Councilmember Garcetti, Councilmember Weiss, the chair of that committee, for approving this in a swift fashion and moving forward with it. So I'd request an I vote and move forward and bring more money to the city at no cost to taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Just for clarification, because there is another related item in the committee process, this is an item specifically for vending services. We're not talking the sponsorship or naming opportunities today, correct?
No, just the vending opportunities. That's what this is about.
Vending services.
And there'll be an inventory of the vending machines that we have, and then we're looking to further expand that, but this is strictly the vending operation within the 900 buildings to either own or lease.
With that being the occasion, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Item 26 is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 30 was called special by Councilmember Miskowski, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed.
Item 30.
Members, this is our normal monthly review status update on the consent decree. In the report, we are adopting some items, particularly getting bi-weekly reports back on some of the computerized technical programs, which have slipped a little bit, and we need to make sure that they're being done. The amending motion basically allows us to go and continue to get a contract with Scantron to look at the field data reports on the pedestrian stops and traffic stops. We're going to do much, much, much less of that because we have now introduced a handheld automatic device which can just scan by way of a driver's license, so that will be automatically able to be made. There are few officers who are still on the street, not in normal patrol duties, but still have to fill out these reports when they're out there, and so we will have the paper trail as well. But most importantly, what I wanted to indicate, there are two things, and one thing in the report that's of value, specific value because of interest in this council, and that is that within the last few weeks, the inspector general has issued his report on retaliation and issues of that nature as they may affect the police department. And as we, as the city council, have come up and looked at some cases in our executive session, in our closed session, we have seen and raised and asked about what is the department doing to address retaliation, how are they dealing with it, what's going on? And I did send out, I believe last week, the IG's report on retaliation to each member. We held one preliminary meeting in public safety committee just to have the report presented. The police commission has also had the report presented, and there were some major steps, major reforms that the IG suggested to the police department that the police commission said we ought to do, and now we need a timeline of how are we going to do them, how is it going to be implemented, and what is it going to mean? So we have invited the city attorney to be part of that review. We have invited the department to report back in one month as to what they're doing to, and how they're going to set their dates for the completion of the tasks of reform that were said in the IG's report. And again, we will have that presentation on that report, both in public safety committee again in 30 days, and then to the full commission, this full council, where the council has asked the department to come forward and address those issues. But overall, I would just like to conclude by saying we get a quarterly report from the independent monitor about how we're doing. And as that report has been brought forward, there have been criticisms, there have been concerns, there have been, gee, how is the department really embracing the consent decree? And I thought it would be worthwhile to read the conclusion in the last independent monitor's report, which was just issued on February 17. The conclusion is that while, as evidenced by this report, areas of concern persist, the monitor continues to be encouraged by the progress that LAPD is making in instituting reforms to address the problems that it still faces. Significantly, the issues raised in our last report relative to the investigation of categorical use of force continue to be addressed with anticipated structural reform in the upcoming quarter. Ultimately, we remain optimistic that full compliance with the consent decree will be achieved. I don't think we've seen something as encouraging as that, as positive as that by the independent monitor, but I think it really is recognized by the monitor that the department sees areas of concern, addresses them quickly, gets on them even before the monitor calls them out, and the monitor is liking what he is seeing about how LAPD is reacting, responding, and truly embracing the consent decree. So I ask for an I vote on this report with the amendment motion, and again, really look for scheduling within this council, probably within the next 30 days, the report on retaliation policy. Yeah, so that council, and I think even today, we have some executive session ideas that deal with some of those issues again, but I want council to know it is being addressed per your request. We have a report, and we will have the department here to respond to you within the next month.
Thank you very much. Other members wishing to be heard? If not, then we do have 38 that has been distributed. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you, Ms. Miskowski. Next item.
Item number 50 was called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, I'll be brief. On this particular item, I just want to share with those that are listening, that this work in the Lision Park has already been completed. The drain that goes below the street on Solano Avenue and dumps into the river actually was completed back in the late 90s. This is paperwork the city attorney wanted us to fill. There are those members of the community who are working on the Lision Park master plan. We have funded that project a few months back. So this particular project has no bearing on those decisions, has no bearing on the impact of the park itself. It's a project that has been completed. This is, again, the legal paperwork we need to complete in order to fulfill our, all of our CEQA guideline requirements. This project's already been finished, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard on the side? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved.
Mr. President, do we have item 30?
Both within item 30. And Mr. Zine, are we ready for item 60?
We're waiting for the city attorney to arrive. Is the city attorney around?
Okay, let's proceed. That's item number 60, Ms. Miskowski. Is the recuse on the side? As she steps out, the roll reflects her absence.
Good morning. I have a couple of questions. A letter was received, and I don't know how many of my colleagues received it regarding this issue. The concerns of legitimacy of extending the moratorium and the existing moratorium, are there any legal problems? And that's the question I have regarding it. Have you received the letter also?
I received it faxed this morning, yes, and we reviewed it. And our position is that government code section 65858 doesn't apply to legislative action of enacting an ICO. It only is applicable to zoning ordinances, and so the case law and everything cited are irrelevant to any action that the council would want to take regarding an ICO.
So anything we do would be legal according to the state's options?
In terms of enacting another ICO, yes. In terms of CEQA, every ICO has required CEQA, but again, that's the findings that the housing department will have to make, and so once we draft the ordinance, housing will make the findings, and we'll transmit it.
Okay, that's all ahead. Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Hahn. Is your button is pressed, or do you speak on the side? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, and thank the city attorney for that clarification. This basically, colleagues, we passed as a matter of policy all of us to have an ordinance that would allow landlords to get money back for rehabilitation, but not to use that as a way to keep people out of unstableized apartments. The only reason we've had to extend that twice is because of our timeline. We now are enacting a new ordinance while we're awaiting the final one, so there's no change in policy. We've all taken on that.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Other members on item number 60? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 73 called special for cards from the public.
Item 73 now before us, and let's hear from Roger Cogan and Pam Cook.
With millions of people out of work and millions more without health insurance, government needs to focus on protecting our families. The proposed federal constitutional amendment seeks to stop the ongoing legislative and legal efforts to protect our gay lesbian families. This amendment is discriminatory, diversionary, and purely political. It protects nobody. Rather, it seeks to permanently negate equal rights to same-sex couples and their children by locking discrimination into the Constitution. Our Constitution was first amended to include the Bill of Rights in 1791. Since then, it has only been amended 17 times. Throughout American history, the Constitution has been amended to expand and protect the rights and liberties of the American people. The Constitution has been amended to abolish slavery and give women and young people the right to vote. It should not now be used to single out gays and lesbians for discrimination. We need to get a grip, and on behalf of the L.A. Gay Lesbian Center, I'm Roger Cogan, Director of Legal Services and Public Policy, and we support the resolution 73. Thank you.
On February 13th, I married the love of my life, Nancy. We've been together for 12 and a half years, going on 13. We have such a stable relationship. We are productive members of the city of Los Angeles, and we ask for your support for the resolution opposing the federal marriage amendment. Why? Same-sex families pose no threat to this country or to other couples and their relationships. The proposal would write discrimination into the Constitution for the very first time ever. Amending our Constitution would have a very real impact on real people's lives like ours. Only 22 counties in the entire United States have reported no same-sex households. Same-sex households are reported, and this is self-identification, which is actually underrepresentation, in 99.3% of all counties. Polls also indicate that minds are changing in the United States, that the views of our younger generations are very conscious of living with full equality and without discrimination. Are we to now start teaching discrimination and equality by writing such a horrible amendment into our Constitution? All across the country, people are hearing President Bush and certain members of Congress saying it's a good idea to write discrimination into our nation's Constitution. This is a very, very bad idea. Discrimination is a deeply troubling notion for most Americans, and I personally am going to fight to attempt to silence this horrible discrimination against our families and yours. I urge a yes vote on this proposal, and that all Americans truly look at what is a measure which is discriminatory and a means of teaching our children that inequality is right. So I ask you to support the measure and to, of course, contact everyone who you know to fight this federal marriage amendment. Thank you very much.
This includes public comment on this item. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Weiss, Mr. DeBose, and Mr. LeBonce.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. The two public speakers we had here are just the tip of the iceberg. There's probably about two dozen more folks who are in the county as we speak right now, talking to county board supervisors, so they represent, I know the number of people from, excuse me, our neighborhood councils and elsewhere. We're going to be coming here, but they're stuck in the board supervisors, so this represents really many, many more people. Many of whom in this city are standing up and saying with a clear voice, and I hope we will join them today, that discrimination is anti-American. The discrimination is not what this country is about, and that this country is about promoting stability, stable families, about promoting love in our neighborhoods, and then what we are seeing at the national level is because we have a president who is in Los Angeles today, who has presided over the first presidency in the last 100 years in which jobs have been lost over the entire presidency, who is facing other problems with foreign policy and outsourcing of jobs who'd like to distract us by pitting us against one another. As a candidate, President George Bush, then governor, said that he thought this was a matter that should be best left up in the states. Well, we agree with that candidate, and we disagree with that same person who now is president is singing another tune, because he doesn't want us to see what's happening in those issues that drive our economy, those issues that are continuing to make Los Angeles any job or place. As he is at the convention center today, we want him to be a partner with us in making sure we have jobs in our community, that we have safety on our streets, that when we have Code Oranges, the federal government gives us the money that we take on to make sure that those streets are safe. I think we have seen, and there were so many people here in City Hall who know, that folks, some people went up to San Francisco like Pam, my chief of staff Ritzewell, and other people who went up to celebrate love, that this is about strengthening of the family, and that if we are to enshrine discrimination and roll back the Constitution for the first time in our history here, that if President Bush wants that to be his legacy, we for one say no, Mr. Bush. This country stands for nondiscrimination, and this is fundamentally un-American. So I hope today, colleagues, that you will join me. Got a little present for Pam that's coming down. We can't give out marriage certificates, that's something done by the county, of course, but we do have a congratulatory certificate for you and Nancy to congratulate you on your wedding, and we'll be giving that to you shortly, and thank you for coming and celebrating with us. And today, I hope that we can stand against the discrimination that the president would like to push on the city. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Garcetti, thank you for those words. Folks who came down today and have courageously spoken out and will continue to speak out, thank you. Mr. Garcetti, you raise a very interesting point. President Bush is in Los Angeles today. President Bush is in Los Angeles today, and today, Los Angeles will say to President Bush, "Your proposed constitutional amendment is wrong, it's offensive, and this city stands united against you, Mr. Bush." I became a lawyer in part because I wanted to participate in the great experiment of the American law, which is the experiment of expanding rights and providing opportunities for others. That is what the history of law in our times has been about. That's what the struggle of law in our times has been about, and that is exactly what this proposed amendment is not about. And so I thought what I would do today, folks, is I brought down from my office, American constitutional law by tribe, and I just wanted to go through a little bit with all of you amendments to the United States Constitution and what they mean. Mr. LeBonce, what's the most recent amendment to the United States Constitution?
I apologize, Jack, I'm not up to date on that.
Okay. In 1992, the 27th Amendment to the Constitution, having to deal with pay for members of Congress, all right? Makes sense? Seems like an appropriate matter for our most important document. Before that, the 26th Amendment, 1971, granting 18-year-olds the right to vote, because 18-year-olds were dying in Vietnam. Before that, the 25th Amendment, 1967, presidential succession to the assassination of President Kennedy. Before that, the 24th Amendment, 1964, having to do with the poll tax, abolishing the poll tax. Before that, 1961, the 23rd Amendment, providing folks who live in the District of Columbia the right to vote for president. 1951, limiting the president to two terms. And 1933, the 18th Amendment to the Constitution. This is fascinating. This is fascinating. What does the Eighteenth Amendment, I'm sorry, the Twenty-First Amendment read? It reads, "The Eighteenth Article of Amendment to the Constitution of the United States is hereby repealed." In nineteen thirty-three, the Constitution was amended to repeal prohibition, which was the Eighteenth Amendment passed in nineteen nineteen. And I just point that out because I think people should know that, yes, indeed, there is a precedent for trying to legislate morality into the Constitution of the United States. It happened during prohibition in nineteen nineteen. It was an abysmal failure. Everyone who was associated with that amendment, I'll bet you regret mightily the way they are treated in the law books and in the history books, and I guarantee you this, President Bush, if you in any way succeed in having your amendment passed, and I don't think you will, if in any way it succeeds, it too will go down in history as a failure, and you will regret today you ever proposed it, because that will be how history will remember you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Guevara.
Yes, Mr. President, members, thank you, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Weiss, for your eloquent words in defense of our Constitution. You know, members, I dare say, if you think about what makes this country different from almost anywhere else in the world, it's the level of freedom that we have in this country. When our founding fathers, when they first drafted this Constitution, they did it as a guide, a guide to ensure that we could pursue a life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Think about that, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. When you look at, as Mr. Weiss has said, the history of constitutional amendments, they've been to add rights, not subtract them. This Constitution has been the embodiment of our ideals of freedom. Our ideals that say that all men are created equal, and obviously, when we say all men, all women as well, the federal marriage amendment would take us back to another era. Take us back to an era when it was okay to discriminate against people. In many ways, discrimination against gays and lesbians is the last frontier of civil rights. It's the one area where people think it's okay. Well, it's not okay, and this city has to stand up for the idea that when we amend our Constitution, we do it thoughtfully. We amend our Constitution to provide more rights, to support the idea of equal rights under the law, not to subtract from those rights. So I stand here with my colleagues, councilmembers, Garcetti and Weiss, to add my voice to the idea that this federal marriage amendment is the wrong way for our country to go. That we have to say in this city, here in Los Angeles, that gays and lesbians have every right to pursue life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, just like the rest of us. Thank you so much.
Mr. Labonte?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Weiss, and Antonio, for all that you've said. I just wanted to add, the importance of our city is that all people here should not be discriminated against in any way, shape, or form. And this call by our president, Mr. Biscay, did fall, because all people should be welcome throughout this country, and that's what makes this country great. And I love talking history back with Antonio about the plight of the Mexican people, about the plight of the Irish, about the plight of all people. And there may be someone down the line further who may be discriminated against. They did find water on Mars, you know, so someone may come here, and they may pick off those people who come here, but we don't want to pick on anybody. And what I really don't want, I really don't want a national discussion that was going to harm people, a national discussion that was going to harm people, that will cause others to do stupid things. The beauty of Los Angeles is that we've got these people to be very open and to be very appreciative of all people. And that's what's so important. That's what's so important about the neighborhood I come from, and it's so important about all of us, and I think it hurts the country. And I see that our governor says that he's opposed to this constitutional amendment, and I see that the leading Republican, Mr. Dryer, is opposed as well. Which I think is a important calming voices, because I think we all should have calming voices. I don't want to see anyone harmed, anyone harmed at a discussion about this issue here. That's most important. So I think it's important that we send a message. And Mr. Weiss, if you're free, go over to Eleventh and Figaro, and you can see Mr. Bush this afternoon, and if you talk to Beckley and Creative Services, they'll make a nice resolution for you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
I too want to thank Jack for that history lesson, and Jack, there's one he didn't read, because there's one that didn't make it. What has been the biggest battle we've had in this last decade, last twenty years, was the Equal Rights Amendment to codify in our Constitution as we should have, as the Congress put forward, as the majority, almost the two-thirds majority of our state said, that there should be equal rights for women, and we failed to put that in the Constitution. How dare we be looking at a constitutional amendment to take away rights, to say second-class citizens, two tiers of rights are available in this, in this country, one for you and one for somebody else, and you don't get them all. It is so appalling, it is so atrocious that this can be talked about in terms of the constitutional amendment, when most of the other amendments, the ones that we valuably do learn in our history books, are about equality, are about equal rights, and recognizing that when we had a second tier of citizens who were equal, who were given everything, we proudly amended that Constitution. We fought wars over internally, that constitutional amendment, to say, all people are created equal, as it says in the Declaration of Independence, we had to ratify it, re-sign it, express it in our Constitution. To do this is exactly the contrary, that's why I am very pleased that the amendment was brought in, and that we as a city should take the stand to say this is not a constitutional amendment of the kind of society we have learned about, or the kind of people we have lived through today.
Mr. Labonte?
Thank you, Mr. President. I had this great speech worked out, and then I heard Cindy's feedback, and it just blew me away. I gotta tell you, colleagues, I've never been so proud to serve on this council in six months or seven months I've been here until this moment. This, just hearing each one of you so articulately speak about equal rights and foundations of this country is based on, just makes me proud. And a lot of people have asked whether or not, when was this going to come to L.A., the going to come to the council, going to weigh in on this? And all this is a tough moment. Is it a tough moment? It's not a tough moment, it's an easy moment. It's an easy moment to do the right thing, and it's an easy ride to ride. For all of you watching on TV, and those of you that may be sort of straddling right now, the question, and I think Councilman Vierigosa came close to it, and the item relative to, when do they come to you? When is it your turn? Every single time in this nation, folks have been attacked for being who they are. People of goodwill have responded, and they've responded to protect human rights, to protect civil rights, and to protect the individual rights of everyone. And that's why this country is special. That's why I've been so proud to be here today with those of you that are speaking in favor of this. Pam, I appreciate your testimony and all that you're doing to fight, to ensure that this amendment does not come out of the administration. Colleagues, this is a great day in L.A., and I think for the three-point-nine million people who live in this city, they pride in the fact that this is the diversity in the country, perhaps the diversity in the world, and that diversity is what makes us great. And so, colleagues, I rise in support of this, and again, thank you for making me proud, and I can speak to say that pretty close to a good number of my constituents probably want to share our opinion. I know there are a few out there that won't, but I do encourage them to look at what makes this country great, and I'm sure when you dig deep and you think about the values of this nation, it is almost incomprehensible that we would create a two-tier system in this nation, and that is something that should be appalling to each and every citizen of the United States. Thank you.
Mr. Garzanas, followed by Miss Han, Mr. Zayn, and Mr. Gray, and Mr. Garcia, for a second time.
It's unfortunate that, in my opinion, we're witnessing this president is scapegoat politics, wedge-shit politics. California, unfortunately, some years ago, had a governor that scapegoated the immigrant community to try to get reelected, because he didn't want to look at the real issues on the table, and chose to pick out a community and have people focus on something else rather than the real issues, and that's what I think is going on right now when the president talks about a constitutional amendment. We hope this document is sacred, and for very good reason, because this document is about protecting people's rights. This document is about making sure that these rights flourish throughout this country, that they are not limited, and they are not chosen based on who you are or what your orientation is, it's based on the fact that you are a human being and we are all equals. I just wanted to stand up and say, thank you, Eric, for bringing this forward, and my colleagues, this is our opportunity to make sure that the real issue is put on the table, and that is that no president, no governor, no elected official, no person, if they want to call themselves true Americans, should go and try to scapegoat one community for their own personal gain, and that's what this is about. And shame on this president for trying to make the Constitution the actual tool or remedy for his own personal gain.
Miss Han?
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, I too rise in support of the second-largest city in this country, speaking with one voice in our opposition to any attempt to change our Constitution to what we have all been articulate in this point, which is to deny equality and to deny equal rights to Americans. It is a sad day, in my opinion, when the President of the United States singles this issue out and calls it of national importance. My friends, what is of national importance are things that we deal with every single day, the economy, the loss of jobs, people not being well-trained for jobs, preparing the next workforce, be able to step into good-paying jobs, healthcare, uninsured children in this country, of which many of them reside right here in L.A. County. Those are of national importance. Violence on our streets. The number of gangs that are now terrorizing our neighborhoods, terrorizing people. That is of national importance. And so for this president to really say, this is the direction our great United States of America should go in, I am so proud of us for rising up and saying, no, and I think we should march across the street, and tell President Bush this in person, that this is not the way we want to move this country. And congratulations, Pam, Rich, to all of you, all of you who declared your love and declared your union and your fellowship with those that you love, that is so important. And, you know, the rights that have been granted to heterosexuals in this country for marriage, I think frankly have been abused, have been abused. We've married, we've divorced, we've married again, we've divorced again, we've married again, we've divorced again, not me. But I think that probably has done more damage and more to undermine the sanctity of marriage than anything, so I think what we're doing today is important. And, you know, it is a big difference between governing by fear versus governing by hope. And anytime, and it is human nature, but anytime we believe that by granting rights or by helping other people to have the same rights that we have, somehow that's diminishing what we have or diminishing what we hold sacred, is so wrong and is so opposite to truly what I think this country is about, and which is our God-given rights. The more we give, the more we bring people into the fellowship of equality, the more we all have, and the more we all rise up to be the human beings that I believe God craves all of us to be. And, you know, every time we say pledge allegiance, one of you ran, ran here, or one of you, that when we get to the last line, and we have our hands over our heart, and we say, with liberty and justice for all, someone here always says, someday. And that pledge is true, it will not be true until someday, everyone has exactly the same rights under the Constitution and under the Constitution.
Mr. Zayn?
Thank you, Al Janis, are you looking to get married there? That is an inside joke. I've heard the dialogue, and I support what my colleagues are talking about. It's about human rights and dignity. It amazes me that the United States criticizes countries around the world for not recognizing human rights. We criticize leaders from around the world that they don't have human rights for people of their country, yet oftentimes, as we see in our country, there's hypocrites that point the finger someplace else. It's their responsibility, not our responsibility. I'm a Republican, and I'm proud to say that I'm a Republican, one or two on the city council, but I work with my colleagues. I have ridden in West Hollywood parade with Eric Garcetti and some of my colleagues, and my uncle is gay, but you know what? He's my uncle, and I love him. And I have worked in the Los Angeles Police Department from nineteen sixty-eight, and if you were gay in nineteen sixty-eight, the LAPD, you'd be fired. The LAPD has changed, they come up to contemporary times, and I can't see opposing dignity and human rights for people. And it's not a matter of your political affiliation, because if you go to the city of West Hollywood, that city has a revenue stream, they just remodeled Santa Monica Boulevard, they got a surplus in money, and they got good law-abiding people in that community, and I grew up in that community. That community is thriving, where other communities are starving and struggling to make ends meet. The gay and lesbian community needs that dignity and that respect. It's been a long, long haul to get to this point, and I know the new mayor of San Francisco, and I met with him before he was mayor, he's a wonderful man, and he broke the ceiling on this, and now we see the trend taking place across the country. When someone loves someone, they love someone for what they are, for what they share together, and discrimination is discrimination. We don't have discrimination in the workplace, we don't have sexual harassment in the workplace, and we shouldn't have that in the city of Los Angeles, we shouldn't have an issue on a federal level where, for political purposes, a certain group of our community throughout this country is going to be discriminated against, and that's what this is all about, it's about discrimination. And I don't support discrimination of any sort. And we've seen the struggle of the African-Americans, we've seen the struggle of the Latinos, we've seen the struggle of women, and women didn't have the right to vote at one time. We've come a long way, but there's still more accomplishments that have to be made. So I support the rights and dignity of people. We don't need to change the Constitution. What we need to do is give the people the rights, the responsibilities, and the respect they deserve as human beings in this country, regardless if they're gay, lesbian, or the ethnicity. We need to treat people as people, and that's what Los Angeles has been known for, and that's what the city council has been known for. And oftentimes, I look around to my colleagues, this is a very diverse city council, and we agree on ninety-nine percent of the issues. Nine-hundred-and-eighty-five times, we're in full agreement, which is important for the people of Los Angeles. So I acknowledge, and thank you for coming down today. I'd vote to support the human dignity and the respect that you all deserve, and while this presidential campaign continues, they don't need to tread on your rights and your privileges and your right to love and care for someone and have the same basic rights that other people have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ray? Mr. Ray?
I think, Council President, this is one of those motions where we already have seven signatures on them. And I think it's one of those motions where we could have probably had everyone sign onto this. I obviously stand in support of this. A lot has already been said that needs to be said. But I just can't help but think of, when you have a marriage, you have a family, you have that element of love that you need for a community. So why wouldn't we want that? It just doesn't make sense to me. So I just support all my colleagues' statements. Lord knows, we need more love in our city, we need more families, and we need more institutions that helps guide our young people with parenting, with care, and that's all we are asking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo, I think Mr. Ludlow talked about it, and how proud we are of all of our members today, and how much we're celebrating the diversity of Los Angeles. Follow you may recall, the mayor, the city attorney, the comptroller, and all of us as city council members took an oath of office. And as part of that oath of office, we swore to support the Constitution of the United States of America. We took that oath of office to say that we were not going to deny anyone their rights. That Constitution states in its 14th Amendment that no state shall deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. What's being proposed by the president today would take away that right. And as so many have mentioned, it is, I think, precedent-setting, that the proposal that's being put forward would actually amend the Constitution to take away rights, when the Constitution was developed, in fact, to expand rights to people. This city in Los Angeles is a place that people want to live here, they want to learn here, they want to raise their families here, they want to be able to have a job here, they want to be able to say that they're proud to be in Los Angeles. And it is my hope that today, when we, I believe unanimously, will support the motion by my colleagues, and, Mr. Ray, you're correct, many of us would have signed on that, we could do more than seven on a motion. This is an opportunity for us to demonstrate to the city, the state, and the country that we believe in people's basic human rights and not deny anyone those rights. So I stand in support of my colleagues and look forward to sending that message unanimously today.
Ms. Garcetti.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for your eloquent words. Thank you, Mr. Weiss and Mr. Vera Rosa, for being co-presenters of this, especially and thank you for the moving tributes that everybody gave. I think that this is a proud day for the city, when we look throughout our city, when we look throughout our city government, when we look at our neighborhood councils, and I want to welcome a few of the folks who arrived as we were speaking, Jason Lyons and Reston Miller, Michael John Horn as well from Silver Lake, and I know the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council is going to be discussing this as well. There's a gay and lesbian caucus of the neighborhood councils that took this on as one of their first issues as well, that wherever we are, there are folks that are just asking for basic equality, people who are not asking for anything special, but to be looked at as equal neighbors, equal friends, equal constituents, and equal residents of the city. I want to take this, because I know we will pass this today, but I also want this to go out as a call to other cities around this country. We challenge them to do the same thing that we have done. We'll probably be the first, or one of the first, certainly probably the biggest city in the country to do this, but we need New York, and we need Chicago, and we need Houston, and we need the Tulsa's, and we need every single village and town and city in this country to speak out with one voice against this hateful policy, against something that would roll back the Constitution, and against something that would single certain people out. There's a great cartoon that many of you must have seen, I think it was Mike Lukovich, that had Al Qaeda, two Al Qaeda gentlemen, who said, I know what we'll do, we'll go get married, and that way we'll undermine the United States. And it's that ridiculous of an argument that people are saying, that somehow that love is going to bring this country down. Well, love uplifts this country, love uplifts this city, and what we are saying today is that there are real enemies out there. Let's get back to fighting them, like unemployment, like lack of health care, like terrorists who would target this country. Let's fight who are our true enemies, and not our friends and our family here within that are simply trying to celebrate the same love in a legal manner that everybody else gets to. So today, thank you, colleagues, for your support. This is a very important stand for Los Angeles to take. Thank you to the community for being out here as well, and congratulations again to those of you who have made your union official. I ask for your support, colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcetti. And unless there's other members wishing to be heard, let's proceed with the votes. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. We'll send this, this and all items approved today forthwith. Next item?
Item 88 was called special, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed to the council members.
Members, item 88 has been distributed. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item? If not, then without objection, let's consider the substitute motion. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
The council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
The excuse is on the desk, Councilmember Garcetti, excuse me, Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, March 26th, to leave at 12:30 PM for city business, that means council policy.
Ms. Cardenas is excused.
And Councilmember Vera Rosa requests to be excused Wednesday, March 17th, to leave early for city business, that also means council policy.
Ms. Vera Rosa is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. I also have received a request from the city attorney's office to continue item number 77, I believe, no, 87. Okay, so item 87, unless there's an objection, is continued till March 16th. And, Mr. City Attorney, 88?
Assistant Assistant City Attorney, sorry for coming back in. On the item number 88, there was a substitute motion, and we had just wanted to clarify the language of that motion, that where it directs the staff to take all actions necessary to enable the city to assume the rights of the endowment, that it also include taking action on the negative declaration on file. That's all, just that clarification.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? Any other matters before going into closed session? If not, then in conformance of California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Sargent, please clear the chambers.
The city attorney would like to say something under the record.
Thank you, Madam President. For the record, Mr. Parks was required to recuse himself, and he did so because he was a defendant in item number 85 and item number 78, and because he was a defendant in a matter related to item number 81.
All right, well, let's take those items that we are acting on while Mr. Parks has recused himself. Madam Clerk?
First item is item number 78, and that settlement in the case of Eric Berg et al. versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $1.2 million.
All right, members, open the roll. Ms. Zain? Ms. Zain? I'm just calling your attention, this is the Berg matter that I think you wanted to vote no on. We're opening the roll on item 78.
Eric Berg versus City.
Eric Berg. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, two noes.
That matter is approved. Next item?
Next item is item number 85, and that's in the settlement in the case of David Gutcher's versus City in the amount of $360,000.
Again, on this matter, members, open the roll for settlement, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
Next item is item number 81, and that settlement in the case of Mark Teeco versus City of Los Angeles et al. in the amount of $1.2 million.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. I believe Mr. Parks is now joining us for the other matters. Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Okay. The next item is item number 77, and that's in the case of City versus John Mantecas and Catherine Mantecas, and that's in the amount of $701,000.
Members, open the roll on this matter, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
And item number 86, which is settlement in Emmy Mortensen versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $1.3 million.
Again, open the roll on that recommendation, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
And that clears the desk, Madam President, of the closed session.
All right, there are some additional motions that came in, we will have those posted and referred. All the items on executive session will go forthwith. Members, we are now, are there any announcements? We do have some announcements. Ms. Zain?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to announce that on Saturday, March 6th, City Boys Basketball Championship, 7:00 PM at the Sports Arena, Taft High School, is going to be going against Fairfax High School. And also on Saturday, March 6th, at 7:00 PM at East Los Angeles College, the City Boys Soccer Championship, Canoga Park High School, is going against Jordan. And we also have on Saturday, March 6th, City Girls Soccer, El Camino High School, the defending champions, will be in the semifinals on, well, they were in the semifinals today, and their championship game is going to be Saturday at East Los Angeles College at 4:30. So just want to recognize Taft High School, Canoga High School, El Camino High School, and the other fine high schools from the San Fernando Valley for their sports activities.
Any other announcements? Ms. Garcetti.
Thank you, Madam President. The, for Mr. Weiss, tomorrow, I know many people are headed to DC to lobby on behalf of the city, the federal level, but I know Mr. Weiss and the ITGS committee will have their first hearing on cable refranchising, asking members of the public to come, who probably are watching right now on cable, and tell us the things you want to see from cable companies and in our cable refranchising negotiations. It'll be at the Annenberg School, USC, tomorrow at 6:00 PM, and I know you can call Council District 5, Mr. Weiss's office, for more information.
And let me also indicate, as Ms. Garcetti did, that council will be in recess for the next week for League of City meetings in Washington DC for us to meet with congressional representatives and other federal agencies. So our next council meeting will be on Friday, March 12th. Any other announcements? Mr. Labange?
Yes, just to join with Mr. Garcetti and his leadership for the Silver Lake Beautification Day on Saturday, the gathering will be at 9:00 AM at Laurel and Hardy Park, just south of Sunset Boulevard, and it will be a great gathering where we will try to, as join with all in the community, to enhance the beauty of Silver Lake in its annual cleanup. So everyone's welcome this Saturday, 9 o'clock, Laurel and Hardy Park, which is just south of, off of Sunset Boulevard at Vendome, and you can't miss the music box stairs sign right there at Laurel and Hardy Park. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Are there any adjourning tributes? Yes, we do have some adjourning tributes. Would everyone please stand? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is that we adjourn in memory of Ruby Sarpe, was a long-term 8th District resident, who was born April 1st, 1926, passed away at the age of 77 on February 27th, '04. She was a resident of the City of Los Angeles for 61 years, and worked in the Los Angeles County Assessors Office. She retired after 30 years of dedicated service. Her funeral service was held at the People's Independent Church of Christ on Saturday, March 6th, 2004. She survived by her son, Ed, and seven grandchildren.
Ms. Zain?
We question adjourn in memory of Talmage Burke, passed away February 29th. Talmage Burke was the City of Alhambra's beloved councilman and former mayor, who completed his 15th term just days ago. Former mayor, had undergone quadruple heart bypass surgery within the past two weeks, became the state's longest publicly-elected state office holder with over 50 years of service to the City of Alhambra. Talmage was born November 1917, graduated from Alhambra High School in 1935. He went on to law school, graduated with a Juris Doctorate from USC. Before being elected to Alhambra City Council in 1952, he served as the city's first prosecutor and deputy city attorney. During his lengthy service, Talmage received numerous service awards and was given the distinguished title of Man of the Year by seven service organizations. Talmage Burke was a kind and compassionate individual who will be greatly missed, and I became familiar with Talmage from Independent Cities Association. He always attended the Independent Cities Association activities, and I saw him just recently up in Santa Barbara at our latest conference. Bill sorely missed. He is survived by his wife Lisa, two children, and a son, a daughter, and six grandchildren. Talmage Burke, may he rest in peace.
All right, all members on that. Members, I'd like to also ask that we adjourn today in memory of two Palisadesians who were the, died in a tragic accident on Monday in the Palisades. First is Jefferson Tiger Taylor, a 36-year-old man, lifelong resident of Palisades, graduated from Pally High, played on the baseball team there, and had been an Eagle Scout. And in his car was his toddler, Baden Alexis Taylor, two and a half years old, a fireball full of life and personality. Jeff Taylor lost control of his car after he picked up his child from daycare, hit a tree, hit the back of a building, the car engulfed in flames, and the two of them lost their life tragically. They are survived by his wife and mother, the mother of the toddler, Colette Taylor, and a five-year-old son, Preston Tiger. Jeff is also survived by Ann Taylor, his mother, and three sisters and two brothers, his in-laws Carol and Ken Cooley, and brother-in-law Chad Cooley. In lieu of flowers, they are asking for donations to be made to the education fund for Preston Tiger Taylor and/or to the Boy Scouts of America. Madam Clerk, call the roll. We are adjourned.